We call this public meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community, especially Buddy Cosgrove and Sam Kromachi. Please keep the Cosgrove and Kromachi families in your prayers this evening.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Here.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Mr. Dunahan?
Here. I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 49, 2022.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table Resolution Number 49 of 2022, and place it in seventh order for a final vote. This resolution was tabled at last week's meeting until our office could be provided with Mr. Fannough's updated resume. The information has been received, and it is in third order on tonight's agenda. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Disperse with the reading in the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed April 1st, 2022. 3B, Minutes at the Civil Service Commission Meeting Held March 1st, 2022. 3C, Minutes at the Scranton Redevelopment Authority Regular Meeting Held March 2nd, 2022. 3D, Correspondence Received From David Fannough Regarding Updated Resume For Reappointment As A Member Of The Board Of The Scranton Lackawanna Health And Welfare Authority Received April 7th, 2022. 3E, Correspondence Received From OECD Regarding Code Enforcement Report For Council Complaints Stated April 5th, 2022. 3F, Correspondence Received From Mayor Page G. Cognetti Regarding The Appointment Of Andrew Cotillo, Esquire Effective March 28th, 2022. 3G, City of Scranton Comprehensive Report For Delinquent Refuge Fees For The Months January, February, And March 2022 Received April 7th, 2022 From Portnoy Law Associates LLC. 3H, City of Scranton DPW Painting Improvement List For 2021/2022 Received April 8th, 2022. 3I, City Council Request Log Updated As Of April 11th, 2022.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So upcoming will be Naughton Park's second annual Mother's Day Drive for St. Joseph's Baby Pantry. It'll be May 7th and 8th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, and is to help stock their pantry so no child has to do without. To include diapers, formula, wipes, lotions, baby powder, sippy cups, baby food, baby cereals. Please, at this time, no clothing or furniture will be accepted. Additional details, email info@naughtonpark.org. And then, secondly, I'd like to wish everyone a blessed Easter, those that celebrate. It'll be this Sunday, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Do any other council members have any announcements?
Mr. President, I have two. DPW will be off on Easter Monday, April 18th, so both trash and recycling pickup will be one day behind. The schedule will be Tuesday, April 19th, through Saturday, April 22nd. Also, I'm not sure if anyone saw the article in the Scranton Times this week about the Naughton Park Scranton repairs. They refilled the reflecting pond at the... they drained it, and they found leaks in there, and they actually fixed it. I just want to thank the volunteers that were involved with that project. It was led by the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority volunteers. The chairman was Bob Gattens, and also Eddie Davis, Jerry Smurl, Bryant Johnson, Billy Birdsale, Pat Murphy, and Bob Shoemaker. I thought they did a great job on that project, and that's just going to enhance the park again and bring it back to some of its glory. Also, I was asked to announce that on April 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m., there's going to be an Earth Day cleanup at Naughton Park for anyone that's available or interested in helping out with the cleanup at Naughton for the spring. Other than that, thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any... do any other council members have any announcements?
I was also going to announce a few of the events that were taking place at Naughton Park, but some of the other guys already beat me to it, so I'm glad to know that that's being put out there for people to be able to attend. Thank you.
Do any other council members have any announcements?
I would just like to take a moment to wish my daughter Maggie a happy first birthday. It's been a great year. She is the brightness to our life, and, you know, we really are blessed. So, happy birthday, Maggie, and that's all I have.
Happy birthday, Maggie.
Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First on the list, Joan Hodawannas.
Joan Hodawannas, Scranton. Before I forget, I just want to note that there are three major religious holidays coming up. We've got Easter. I think at the end of this week, Friday, is the beginning of Passover, and we're also into the month of Ramadan. So, for everybody celebrating those various traditions, happy Easter, happy Passover, and happy Ramadan. Any update on the negotiations for the various labor contracts?
They are all still ongoing.
Okay, well, this is day 102 of 2022, and 29% of the year is gone. I was happy to see that Mr. Fannough did send in an updated resume and changed his BSN business to an associate's degree, apparently, although I do wish he would learn how to spell the word Scranton. There is no M in Scranton. Now that ex-city official Jack Sweeney has had his day in court, what is the status of Megan Raid, who was the prior city treasurer?
I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to know. She's still on leave, unpaid leave, paid leave. It'd be interesting to know.
I could find out and see what information...
Especially since we have...
Considering it's a personnel matter, I could see what information we are able to provide.
But since we now have an official treasurer, there should be some action there. With regard to 7B, the agreement with America Asphalt Painting, did we ever figure out the difference between the financial funding of $848,000 from, I guess, OECD and their bid of $1.9 million?
So originally, they were going to combine the Action Plan number with ARP-A money, but now we're going to separate those out.
Okay.
So this is only the OECD part, and in the bids, each street had a different price, so that's how it was judged.
It wasn't clear in their backup. They didn't discuss that at all. If you read this morning's paper, there was a very interesting letter to the editor from Robert Cudworth. He's a retired military officer, you know, holds a position of responsibility, I think, in the Military Officer Association of America, of which I am a member. And he wrote a letter about the county violating flag etiquette. Okay? Now, I don't know how many people are prior military service or ex-boy scouts or ex-girl scouts. It seems that flag etiquette is not a subject taught in public school or just generally known. But, you know, you could kind of dismiss the lack of etiquette by private citizens and private organizations, you know? That's their business. But when it comes to a government entity like the City of Scranton, it's important that somebody in the administration be aware of the code. It's not very long, but there are certain things to be aware of. This started back in 1942. You can download it from the Internet. "It is a universal custom to display the flag only from sunrise to sunset on buildings and on stationary flagstaffs in the open. However, the flag may be displayed at night upon special occasions when it is desired to produce a patriotic effect." Apparently, we in the county just like to keep it up forever. Okay, that's all right, as long as it's illuminated. "The flag should not be displayed on days when the weather is inclement." Okay? If you're ever on a military installation, what they'll do is they'll take the garrison flag down, and they'll put up what's called a storm flag, which can take high winds and everything else, and then, when the weather passes, they switch it out. Of course, we always retire the flag at night. It's called retreat, and put it up in the morning, and it's called reveling. So my only comment there is, you know, we keep ours up. If you look at our flag tonight or in the daytime tomorrow, it's kind of dirty because it's up all the time, and it gets soiled. It doesn't have to be ripped to be warrant being taken down and replaced. And we're coming up on Memorial Day, which is the traditional day of disposing of flags by burning, so maybe we can put up a new flag. And if you don't have the money, I'll buy it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to add to that, just a reminder, too, if anyone wants to dispose of a flag, they could so at your local post office, and they'll dispose of them properly. Next on the list is Kristin Zanitz.
Good evening, council. My name is Kristin Zanitz. I live in Greeridge. The reason I'm here today is in reference to the Pocket Park in downtown Scranton. I've read numerous articles about, you know, it being renamed after somebody. As far as I understand by what it says, it's being renamed after Mayor Chris Doherty. During his time of being mayor, a cement plant was put up across from where I live, 22 feet He, at the time, I went to the city council, I went to the mayor's office, I went to everywhere in the city you could go to have somebody do something to get rid of it. Took a very long time. They finally moved out after a while, I think because they were on tax-free zone for so During that time, I, as well as everybody in my house, because it was a cement plant, got asthma. My house filled with silica. There's a film of silica still to this day everywhere you go. No matter how many times you clean, you're not going to get rid of it because they never did anything for the ground that's over there. At the time, the only one that tried to help us, you know, besides Janet Evans that was on city council at the time, some citizens, Marie Schumacher tried to help, Ozzy Quinn, you know, fortunately passed now, but those were the only two people, besides Janet Evans on council, that tried to help. I, you know, in my opinion, I can't understand how, you know, what the reason is for renaming it after Mayor Chris, previous Mayor Chris Doherty. It very much bothers me because he did absolutely nothing except knowing it was put there and knowing it was put there, did nothing to help. I mean, a cement plant really shouldn't be in a neighborhood. I really thought those were industrial parks for those. You know, after a while, you know, my dog got sick. My dog died. Grandmother died. I, at that time, I was in high school. I missed quite a bit of high school because of it. I, you know, I know, you know, me coming here isn't going to change anything because they're still going to name it after him. I, you know, as I said, I have very harsh feelings about this. You know, I, you know, understand, you know, parks, I understand they're good. That's not the problem. The problem is renaming it after somebody that, in my opinion, it's my opinion only, but in my opinion, did nothing at the time for the city or for this problem. This was a major problem. It was in newspaper quite a few times. Me and my mother and everybody came to city council, you know? At the time, I understand, you know, city council, there was only so much they could do. But I, you know, it really bothers me to this day that they insist on naming it after him when there's so many other people in this community, in this city, that do things for people. I mean, people tried to help, but, you know, Mayor Chris Doherty, I, you know, I was in the office with my mom the one day, and she got escorted out because, you know, I don't know why, I know they knew them, you know, and that cement plant was very well-known at the time because we kept trying to get rid of it. But me coming here isn't going to help, but I just, I can't understand what the reasoning is to name it after the previous mayor. But thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too. Next on the list is Ivana Zinas.
Good evening, council. I hate public speaking, but the only reason I'm here is, it's a long story. My brother was in a fire. He ended up in regional hospital. He had two legs amputated. I was told he needs post-acute care, but there's no place in Scranton. He has to go to Wolksberry or Danville. They sent him to Wolksberry. This was the middle of February 2020. I got a call in the middle of the night that my brother was in a room with a gentleman that apparently passed away, and my brother contracted COVID. He died within two weeks. He died when they intubated him. He had a cardiac arrest, and he died. My question here is, why doesn't Scranton have post-acute care? We have three large hospitals. Nobody, I mean, I couldn't see my brother before he died. This has broken my heart. I just don't understand why Scranton doesn't push for post-acute care. It's very important. I don't know where to go. I went to the mayor, went to Congressman Cartwright. Someone has to help. This could happen to anybody's family, not just mine. This could happen to anybody's. They didn't want him coming home. They said he needed medical care, but he didn't need medical care in a hospital. He needed, in a setting where he was on IVs after his amputation. I mean, come on, that was terrible. If anyone could help me, I'd really appreciate it because I'm trying to get the ball rolling on one of these big hospitals around us. We're not living in Mayberry. We're in Scranton. I appreciate your help, and thank you, Dr. Rothschild, for speaking to me. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, council. I, too, I can understand the frustration some people have. I tried to start my lawnmower today. Been sitting outside for a year. Of course, I failed. I'd like to mention quickly about bicycle paths downtown. If you stood in front of this building for a whole day, how many bicycles would you see riding around here, except maybe going for free lunch or something? Cars pay taxes. Now, we're full of electric cars, aren't paying their share of taxes, but to turn the main streets into bicycle paths is asinine, and it could be dangerous, too. And it seems like people injured or hurt in a car accident in this city, it just goes. My friend Bob Benke run over with people, saw what happened at Wyoming, nothing ever done. The man was slaughtered right in front of my house about two months ago. The car didn't stop for half a block up the street. No charges are pending. When Mrs. Corbett's sister was injured in that accident, there was no stone unturned, and that's how it should be. I'm not complaining. That is how it should be for everybody, not just swept under the rug. But downtown doesn't need bicycle paths. We're not like Sweden where everybody rides a bicycle. I don't know the statistics, but they built a billion-dollar bicycle path by my house right there in Parker Street. They did away with a beautiful forest area to make a bicycle path, and you know what's using it? The kids in the quads and the trail bikes are racing up and down the thing. There's your million dollars. They did away with a forest that was like the Abingtons or Naughton cut it all down for a bicycle path, and I've yet to see a bicycle on it. I go by it with my little dog once a week, I mean, once a day. All I see is the kids racing, and if one of them gets injured on city property, it's not going to be a good thing. I don't want to offend anyone, but I found it very offensive by a councilman a couple weeks ago that expected people to do their job and not need consultants. I won't mention anyone's name. And then, to add to this, Mr. Flynn thinks some people ought to be fired if they can't do their job. What are these deadbeats going to do? Who they going to live off of if it's not the taxpayers of Scranton? Have any of you ever phoned the licensing bureau? You can phone to your blue in the face, and they won't answer you, and they don't do nothing. I've been complaining for years how bad my neighborhood looks, and it just doesn't affect nobody. I got junkyard on Troop Street, cars in the street for a year that aren't licensed and insured or nothing. There's two houses that sold this week. It's in the paper, in the $40,000s, because my neighborhood has gotten so run down because the licensing bureau has somebody that doesn't even know it exists, it seems. Well, I thank you for letting me get even for my lawnmower not starting up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Have a good evening. That exhaust design-in sheet for tonight, would anyone else like to address, council?
Tom Coyne, Manuka, members of council. We recently put on that there was a fundraiser for Scranton having an office mural. Has anyone involved in that received copyright releases from the people who are represented in those pictures, as well as NBC Universal?
I believe they are working with NBC Universal, who owns the copyright.
And also the people who have been, that are photographic likenesses?
I know they're working with NBC Universal.
So we started the fund before we have copyright permission?
I don't know. I'm not a lawyer in terms of copyright.
Okay. Last week, I had asked the status of Officer Chad Doherty, who admitted to drunk driving, and the officer on the scene, to the officer on this scene, whether he was suspended with or without pay. Further looking back, a month prior, Officer Leland Palmer failed the sobriety test. He agreed to take a blood test. An arrival at the hospital, the officer did not remember consenting to the blood test and denied it upon being asked again. What is his status? And what is the official policy for the police department on officers who are charged with Scranton last week reported in the Manuka section, a $1.4 million drug bust, which was actually in South Scranton. Police reported 600 marijuana plants. From the picture provided, they were new plants, and 100 pounds of harvested marijuana at an estimated street value of $1.4 million. I'm curious how the police come to the estimated street value. A quick look at dispensary prices in Scranton provides the price of decent-strength marijuana. 3.5 grams is $40, or $11.40 a gram. 100 pounds is 45,359 grams. At $1.4 million value, the police say the street value was just shy of $31 a gram, a 300% increase over dispensary prices, who are under a high tax burden. Wholesale price for marijuana is about $6 an ounce, or $272,154. Dispensary price is $11.40, or $517,093. How much did the number get inflated? By $886,000 or by $1,127,846? I'm just curious on how the numbers are actually calculated for press releases, because they seem to be inconsistent with market prices in a state that actually legally sells it through dispensaries. Now on to IT. I'm sure two weeks ago, you must have been notified, members of council, or automatically upgraded for both your Chrome and Edge browsers, as there was a patch for a critical exploit, right? If not, I don't know why you haven't been notified. Last, on the insurance contract. It was released that major increase was $171,000 a year due to the increase on the cyber insurance. If only someone could have warned us. Wait, I did. I told city council on 12/16/2019. The departing member passed it on, and I was told it was being addressed, and it could not be discussed because of security. That action cost the price of a new $250,000 trash talk every two years. What happened? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address, council, this evening?
Marie Schumacher. As there wasn't any new business in five or six, I took a little bit deeper look at the third order. And the first one, 3A, I don't understand why there's a percentage, just percentage of the total of what's been collected to date. It would be nice to have some useful information, which would be something like, and I'm going to give these to you when I leave, it would be nice to have a number of the tax bills that have been mailed. It would be nice to know the numbers of the bills that were paid in full and those being paid quarterly and those not making... paid quarterly, and those not making any payment. Instead of the percent of total collected, it would be more informative to show the year-to-date percent of the total budget for each line. And then, the percent from the third might also be compared with the prior year, to see if we're doing better than this year or last, or if we're not doing better than last year. So, those are my comments on that one. Then, the next one is tough, especially during Holy Week, but I can't help it. I expect a treasurer to be concerned about details. But looking at this document, I believe it's a typo on one line. It says certified by the NFCC ABD Bankruptcy Court. I believe that's a typo, that it was meant to be "and." And then, when he has additional information at the bottom, it says, "I have a very confidential rapport," R-A-P-O-R-E, there is no word. I believe he meant R-A-P-P-O-R-T, "with some very difficult clients." Now, that's nice, but, you know, if I was doing something like this for somebody, I would truly give it to somebody that I knew and would look it over for me and pick this up. So it tells me two things about how he works with other people, and just doesn't care about details, I guess. So, I don't know him. Is that other woman ever coming back that was appointed to be a treasurer, or was that just a...
I don't know what her status is. Ms. Holdewannet's brought that up, and I'm going to check into that as much as...
Oh, okay. Well, I wasn't here. Okay, the next one is the paving improvements. Now, you know, I feel sorry for poor Pike Street. It's got to be at least 70 years now that they have not have had anything done to their streets. I went to some of the streets in my section, and I would say, well, first, let me just go my... It would be nice to have the ZIP codes that go with each street. And where, I would like to know if there's a residents' association where any of these go. Were these given to the association to look over them and to point out some things? Because, for instance, at the road that's going to be redone from Fire Engine 10 House over to Derby Avenue, there's a spot where they, where there's a swamp connects to a stream, except that it goes across the street instead of under it. So that definitely needs a pipe. Is the pipe included in here?
So I know, no, it's not, but I do know they are re-engineering that to deal with that issue.
Okay, and then, and then there's the other one on the other side, but right at the top of Burke Street, where there is a pipe underneath. It's a stream that just goes through, but it's not, it probably needs a...
Is that by the new development, or is that around on Burke Street?
It's around.
Okay.
And, I mean, it's easy to see, but it certainly needs, I think, a cement culvert over it. And then, East Elm Street, there's a, there's a, well, I have the trouble spot. I have the, on here, I have the utility pole numbers. But if you go over to, and I have it for East Elm Street, too, but there's a section when you turn off Derby Avenue that has springs underneath it. And I don't, I mean, I don't know how you do it, but there's got to be some way to do it, because if you just resurface that road, first big storm, and it's going to be just like it is now.
Yeah. I'll look into that. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay, here.
Would anyone else like to address, counsel, this evening?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dodson, resident. One thing I'd like to mention about that grant, I don't know if the, you've heard of firemen, I don't know if the decision has been passed on that already, but if you think it might ease some issues with the negotiations, it might need some, or could use some consideration. Other than that, it's up to you. Once again, I'd like to speak about Ukraine a little bit. The thing that's unique about what's going on over there with Comrade Putin, I'm starting to call him just Comrade Pupsky, but he threatened to use nuclear forces in an aggressive war, which internationally, they're considered, supposed to be considered last resort defense. So, they need tanks, jets, anti-aircraft, long-range anti-aircraft, surface-to-air and surface-to-surface long-range vehicles. And here's the number to call if you're out there in TV land and you're interested, 1-202-225-3121. And you can actually ask for the senator or congressman that you want to talk to, or give them your ZIP address. And it doesn't seem to be stopping. It seems to be getting worse and worse and worse. And I suspect that the only thing that's going to stop him is when he's walking out of the Kremlin for the last time, or maybe hopefully in handcuffs. I often speak about the COVID issue. Once again, it's on the upswing. Philly is considering reenacting mask policies for indoors. And at any rate, getting back to Mr. Putin, a lot of this anti-vax stuff, you're just being a useful idiot for Putin. He's using it to, a lot of this is the same type of things on the internet and QAnon nonsense and stuff that, it's Russian origin. The critique of the vaccine, somebody got a shot and dropped dead. Well, they might have fainted, but they're still alive, from what I know. And if you're a nurse and you faint over a little shot, maybe you should find something else to do. And on voting rights, you have organizations like the American Legislative Exchange Council, and they're constantly running around the country promoting tightening voting restrictions and impeding the vote. And it's not right. It's, you have the Heritage Foundation, all types of different organizations that are well-funded, and they're just lobbyist organizations. And I mean, Alec, the gun laws that cost Trayvon Martin his life, were American Legislative Exchange Council. I mean, I don't need every jerk under the face of the earth with a shiny new pistol following me around when I'm locking my dog or something, either, you know? Not that paranoid about guns, but... And another thing with Ukraine, perhaps we could have the government petition some businesses to stay at home on their office work and save gasoline, and also put a dent in that. And once again, we, I'm kind of disappointed, I was disappointed with the school board that they didn't join that lawsuit over the $40 million or shorted. I'm out of time. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, you, too. Would anyone else like to address, counsel, this evening? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments this evening?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments this evening?
Yeah, two things, one which ties into another. I'd like to thank the sign crew at DPW and the DPW Department. They had a quick response to a sign that was down, that I got a call from a neighbor, and they had it up within the day that I sent over the email about that sign being down. And on that same day, I got to speak with one of my neighbors, who the drainage basins on West Mountain had been. At this point, after a year of clogging, the drainage basins are pretty much clogged up. So I did put that request into DPW as well. They said that would be on the list. And that's what brings me over to my next comment. I know we haven't really been given official, any developments at the 1700 block of Wyoming Avenue, but, Mr. Waldenberg, could we reach out to see if there's been any movement on that? Because we are in a time of the year where we're getting a lot of rain, and I know seeing these bases get filled and knowing that there's blockages over there, we definitely need to get a bead on what's going on over there. Thank you.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
I have none this evening, thank you.
Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
I just want to just say a couple words about Buddy Cosgrove, who passed away this week. Buddy would always call me weekly regarding the delinquent trash, where we stood with delinquent trash refuse fees. And last week, I was actually able to get him the sheet while he was in hospice, and he wanted to make sure he read it. Buddy was a pillar of his community, not only in North Scranton, but, you know, throughout the city. He had a heart as big as gold, as big as could be, and, you know, no one ever walked away from a conversation with him without a smile on their face. And I just want to say he will be missed, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg?
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 54, 2022, amending Resolution Number 229, 2021, entitled, Ratifying and Approving the City of Scranton Application for a Peer Grant from the Trust for Public Land in the Amount of $10,000 for a Parks Trails Accessibility Study, and Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate City Officials to Accept the Grant, Coordinate, and Disperse the Grant Funds as Appropriate, to Include Additional Conditions Required by the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 55, 2022, authorizing the mayor, Office of Economic and Community Development, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with American Asphalt Paving Company to provide street improvements within the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, so, since perception's 100% reality anymore, there was a little confusion last week as with regards to the bid and the scope of work. So Solicitor Gallagher, could you just clarify, like we spoke in caucus, about, they're going to scale back some streets, this paving list is different than the one that was presented in 3H, and that the ones that are going to be removed are only for a time being, and these streets will be paved when other funding comes in? Could you just clarify that conversation we had, please?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Attorney Hart, OECD office. Originally, the plan was, and as Mr. Donahue said earlier, was to use the CDBG money in addition to money from the ARPA funds. Apparently, there's some certain restrictions on the ARPA funds that can't be used together with the CDBG money. So that's where the change in money comes from. So the little bid, I think, was 1.9. Now, they could only use the CDBG money, which I believe is 8.48. I don't have it in front of me. But I don't know what streets were taken off. I didn't ask that, but I do know that the streets aren't just being forgotten, they are going to be paved, just, I believe that comes with the ARPA money at a later date.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 49, 2022, reappointment of David Fanoff, 1812 Academy Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lakewanna Health and Welfare Authority. Mr. Fanoff's term will expire on December 31, 2027.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, file to Council Number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation, the updated zoning ordinance, is being tabled to allow for additional input and any amendments. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.